Good evening, everyone. I call the meeting back into session from executive session to regular session. This is the meeting of the North Andover School Committee for Thursday, April 4th, 2024, resuming regular session. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and do the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We have a lot of people here tonight. So the next order of business is public comment. If anyone would like to make public comment, please state your name and address and welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Zora Warren. I live at 129 Wayland Circle. I serve as the treasurer of the North Andover CPAC and tonight I am speaking on behalf of the North Andover CPAC. First, welcome to the new members of the school committee. We are very excited to be working with you and the entire school committee, so thank you for serving. Next, in our capacity as advisors to the North Andover School Committee, we are here tonight to express our clear support for the immediate establishment of a subcommittee or other advisory committee mechanism with the charge of reviewing the report authored by Urban Collaborative, creating and presenting an actionable plan for the district, utilizing Urban Collaborative's recommendations, and guiding district administration in conjunction with the school committee on the implementation of the short, medium, and long-term plan. We ask the school committee to establish this subcommittee expeditiously to address both the immediate needs of special education students and their families, as well as the long-term changes that will be required to meet recommendations of the review. Should this subcommittee be established by this board, we would recommend the following: A diverse subcommittee that represents all stakeholders and includes at minimum the following: Two members of the North Andover CPAC Executive Committee; One parent guardian of a child within the preschool elementary grades; One parent guardian of a child within the middle high school grades; A general education teacher; A special education teacher; a teaching assistant; And an educational team lead who are employed in North Andover; Two members of the school committee with one serving as chair of the subcommittee; One member of the select board; One member of the finance committee; The executive director of special education; The assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. If this subcommittee is not subject to open meeting law, that the subcommittee shall still post agendas and meeting schedules in advance, remain open to the public during meetings, and create and post meeting minutes and applicable documents. Throughout and in summary, this subcommittee shall provide periodic and formal updates and/or recommendations to the school committee. And as the committee evolves, it should be given authorization to create working groups within itself with working group chairs, who can then rely on input from other stakeholders and experts regarding their specific task or tasks. And finally, and most importantly, that all members shall act transparently and in the best interest of the children of North Andover. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right. Excellent. Thank you for that. Welcome. We have some recognition tonight. First, I'd like to welcome our two new school committee members, Ms. Kelly Cormier and Mr. Ed Moskowitz. Thank you for serving. Welcome to the committee. You're in for a good time. So I don't know if you'd like to say, either, both of you would like to say a few words to introduce yourselves to the, remember you were on television as well. Doesn't matter, would you like to go first, Ed?
Well, I'm Ed Moskowitz. I'm glad to be here. Is that sufficient? Or do you want a little more than that?
Whatever you feel comfortable with.
I have things I'll probably say later on.
Okay.
Again, my name is Kelly Cormier. I'm not sure where to look. Looking forward to being a member of the school committee and working with everyone on the committee, as well as the entire community, for our students.
All right. Thank you both. Appreciate that. And then we also have other recognition. I believe we have some guests here who want to maybe sing us a song or something like that. So welcome to, no, do you want to?
Oh, yeah, no, you can welcome it.
All right, well, welcome. And please, if you have something for us, we'd love to hear it.
So I'd like to welcome tonight, and we're going to have Ms. Allison Looney, faculty advisor to Beauty and the Beast in drama. She's going to introduce her group tonight. We're thrilled. Actually, when I, when they were coming in and I left that, my office for a few minutes, we were just going over the specifics. They, you know, we had to make sure we had a sound check and everything.
Right. Are they, are you going to sing?
I am not, although I do want to note that I did take four years of chorus in high school. I was a baritone and I was not very good. That said, it's really remarkable, not only the musical, but our music program. I just found out today that the National Association of Music Merchants have named North Andover Best Music Community for the seventh consecutive year. You know, I heard that from Mr. Clark, Ms. Durkin, Mr. Smalley, so congratulations. I think we're missing like a little piece of the plaque in our front lobby. I think it only has up to 22. I don't think that NAM sent us one for 23, but now we're up for 24. So I'll welcome Ms. Looney and take it away.
My name is Allison Looney. I'm one of the Drama Guild advisors. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. We're really excited to perform one of our numbers from our past musical, Beauty and the Beast. We'll be performing Belle this evening. We, today, we have a group of mostly seniors. We, our entire cast and crew was a total of 74 students, so we did choose to bring a smaller amount here today. So we have a, mostly seniors and then a few of our vocal leads. So we're going to have everyone come up to the front and we're going to do a small performance for our show.
(applause)
(music playing)
Little town, it's a quiet village, every day like the one before. Little town full of little people waking up to say.
Bonjour.
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 There goes the baker with his tray like always, the same old bread and rolls to sell. Every morning just the same, since the morning that we came to this dull provincial town.
Good morning, Belle.
Good morning, monsieur.
Where are you off to today?
The bookshop. I just finished the most wonderful story about a beanstalk and an ogre and a-
That's nice. Marie, my guest, hurry up!
But there she goes, that girl is strange but special. Baby's been distracted, can't you tell? Never born of any crown.
Cause her head's up on some cloud.
They're denying she's a funny girl that Belle.
Bonjour. Good day. How is your family?
Bonjour.
Good day.
How is your wife?
I eat six eggs!
That's too expensive!
It must be more than this provincial life.
Ah, Belle.
Good morning. I've come to return the book I borrowed.
Finished already?
Oh, I couldn't put it down. Have you got anything new?
Not since yesterday.
That's all right. I'll borrow this one.
That one, but you've read it twice.
Oh, it's my favorite. Far-off places, daring sword fights, magic spells, a prince in disguise.
If you like it so much, then it's yours.
But sir.
I insist.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
But there she goes, that girl is so peculiar. I wonder if she's feeling well.
With her dreamy fur off look.
And her nose stuck in a book. What a puzzle to the rest of us is Belle.
Oh, isn't this amazing? It's my favorite part because you'll see. Here's our ship is prince charming, but she won't discover that it's him till chapter three.
Now it's no wonder that her name means beauty. Her looks have got no parallel.
But behind that bare facade, I'm afraid she's rather odd. Very different from the rest of us. She's nothing like the rest of us. Yes, different from the rest of us is Belle.
Kerpluie! I got a guest on. Wow, you're the greatest hunter in the whole world!
I know.
No beast alive stands a chance against you, and no last for that matter.
It's true, Lefou, and I've got my sights set on that one.
The inventor's daughter?
She's the one, the lucky girl I'm going to marry.
But she's-
The most beautiful girl in town.
I know, but-
That makes her the best, and don't I deserve the best?
Of course you do!
Right from the moment when I met her, saw her, I said she's gorgeous and I fell. And only she who's as beautiful as me, so I'm making plans to woo and marry Belle.
Look there, he goes, isn't he dreaming? Monsieur Gaston, oh, he's so cute! Be still, my heart, I'm hardly breathing. He's such a tall, dark, strong and handsome brute.
Bonjour. What a good day.
Maybe call this bacon, pray some cheese.
One pound. Get the knife, he's letting through.
His bread and stale, stale as bacon.
Give us a steed for the this provincial night.
Just what I'm going to make Belle my wife!
But there she goes, that girl is strange but special. A most peculiar mademoiselle.
It's a pity and a sin.
She doesn't quite fit in. She really is a funny girl, a beauty but a funny girl. She really is a funny girl that Belle.
(applause)
Bravo. The chair of the school committee is going to present you with a certificate, and I am going to read it out loud, and you can go present. And Dr. Mealy, you can get the picture. And what it says is, hold on. It says, "Bravo to the cast, crew, and director for the outstanding production of Beauty and the Beast presented this March at North Andover High School, signed by the superintendent of schools and the chair of the school committee, David S. Brown." Congratulations.
(applause)
Good job. Probably hard without the conductor and the orchestra pit, right?
Yeah.
Keep in touch.
We need a more.
You guys are beautiful. Congratulations, terrific, terrific.
Thank you.
All right, now, I know that some of you talked to me earlier about all the homework you need to do tonight, and that you have to get out of here as soon as possible to get home, but we, are we good? We're good with the recognition portion. Thank you so much.
We appreciate it very much, guys. Fantastic.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. You three have to stay.
All right, next we have consent items. First, there is a donation from Watts Water Technologies. It's in your packet. And we need to, well, it would be nice if we would accept it, I guess, so.
Yeah, we have Mr. Kip here tonight.
Oh, excellent.
If you want to come up. So we're really thrilled to have him here tonight. He is an attorney by trade, an attorney for Watts, and he's had to present us the, or to recognize him as well for this donation.
Right, well, absolutely.
It's incredible. So this $5,000 donation goes towards our robotics team and their trip. We have a couple going to the World Championships.
In Dallas?
I understand, two different teams.
Two different teams here, headed to Dallas in April 25th.
Yes, we received a letter from a member of the team at Watts. I should introduce myself. My name is Seth Kip. I'm an attorney in the Watts Legal Department over on Chestnut Street. So, and I work with the philanthropy committee within the organization that approves and considers charitable donations to our local communities and worthy causes. We received a letter from a member of the team asking for support, so did some research. It turns out that there are actually two different teams that have qualified for the championships in Dallas coming up, so we reached out to Bennett O'Hearn, the director of the team, and we were told an amount of $5,000 would go a long way to defraying costs of that trip.
All right, well, we certainly appreciate it. We need to vote, I believe, to accept the donation.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion to accept the donation of $5,000 from the Water Technologies Company for the Vex Robotics World Championships in Dallas.
Excellent.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is amazing. Really, this is phenomenal. Thank you so much to you and your company.
You're very welcome, and Watts is very pleased to be able to support this.
And it seems like it's quite appropriate, as you have robotics, a lot of robotics work going on there.
Yes, this is the, this is our 150th anniversary. We've been around for 150 years, founded in Lawrence in 1874. We support advancements in STEM education and including robotics, so this is a wonderful cause.
All right.
Thanks for the history. I really enjoyed, as a former history teacher, the history of Watts, and boy, it's been around a long time. So thank you so much.
Yes, very much appreciated.
You probably weren't doing robotics 150 years ago.
No, I think that's a, that's a newer initiative for the company.
I imagine that's true. All right, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to vote on the motion. Ms. Conick?
Yes.
Mr. Moskowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And the chair definitely votes yes. And thank you very much.
I'd like to shake your hand as well.
Oh, of course. Thank you for considering this rather mundane proposal after that very tough act of our own. Thank you. Really appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I imagine you don't have any homework to get to, so you can stay. All right, that concludes our consent items. Now we have, oh.
No, we have minutes.
We have minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we have minutes. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I am moved to approve the meeting minutes of March 21st, 2024, of the school committee.
I'll second.
All right, so if anyone had a chance to review, or need any time with it, or any discussion. Okay, hearing none, we'll vote. Go this way, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
I abstain since I wasn't a member of the committee.
Sure.
Abstain.
Same for Mr. Moskowitz. Okay, Ms. Conick?
Yes.
I get to, I get to be the final vote on this one, too. So, Mr. Brown, the chair votes yes, the minutes are approved on March 21st. Okay, next we have student representative reports. All three of them are here. And a little birdie told me that I should ask. I was told to ask. I was told to ask.
You were told to ask?
Yes, by someone else. Did someone here from college?
Yeah, so I've heard from a couple of schools since we last spoke. I got into Amherst College and then Harvard as well.
Amazing.
Nice. Congratulations. A little birdie on the way in said, "You should ask Ben." We have talking birds, we have talking birds here in North Andover, in case you didn't know.
That's an amazing accomplishment.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. That's awesome. Do you know where you're going yet?
I mean, I'm going to go to both accepted student states and decide.
Oh, good. All right, good for you.
Interesting choice, very different.
Yeah, you're really different, small, big, city.
Echelon in a very different way.
Yeah. Oh, good luck with that, Ben.
Thank you.
All right, now, please, all three of you.
Junior prom has started selling tickets for its prom on April 26th at Sea Glass in Salisbury. There was a vaping awareness event where there was a panel with Anthony Siderity, an addiction, addiction awareness speaker who recently spoke to the freshmen and sophomore classes at the high school. The NAPS Director of SEL, Michelle O'Leary, Officer Contreras, NAPD School Resource Officer, among others. There will be another presentation later in April from a member of the Greater Lawrence Family Health Center. Relay for Life has an event happening next Friday, April 12th, from 6:00 PM to midnight. It is a six-hour event where the, and is Disney-themed to help raise money for cancer, or cancer awareness. Coffee House is next Friday as well, and Duck the Halls, a event where teachers are given the opportunity to hide a little rubber duck in their classroom for students to find throughout the day, is happening next Wednesday, and students who find a little prize will give them to Mr. Meehan in return for a little prize.
There's a National History Day State's Competition this Saturday. Two groups from North Andover High School are attending and competing. Senior group, McKenna Doobie, Patricia Voe, and myself are presenting an exhibit on the Bread and Roses Strike of Lawrence. And Alex Sturdvent, who's a freshman at the high school, is doing a solo performance on William Sims, who is, I believe Sims Lobby is named after, at the middle school, who kind of went against the, the town consensus to approve the Constitution about 300 years ago. So two very interesting and different projects, but both local history, which I love, are competing on Saturday with the chance to go to Nationals later in May. At the last school committee meeting, we were asked to talk more about the bathroom situation and kind of that new policy at the high school. Sophomore Ally Roberts has been kind of leading that dialogue with administration. She met, or has met, a couple of times. A couple of things that have come out of those meetings, she would like to start in kind of the student councils as a whole, a vaping recovery program called the 84. It's a statewide program that aims to educate and kind of provide a space where addicts can, can recover from nicotine. There's also been talks around specific issues such as secondhand smoking, the open door policy. These, the bathrooms, if you're not aware, are all kind of open door, there's teachers stationed out of them, and a lot of students have voiced kind of issue with that lack of privacy. And bathrooms being locked when they shouldn't, making students kind of travel a lot farther and miss more class time than they should be. It sounds like more bathrooms will be opened in quarter four, helping with some problems with that secondhand smoke and kind of overcrowding where most of the school is kind of going to only a couple bathrooms. And we're excited to see what comes out of those talks. The German and Spanish departments are also taking trips to Germany and Spain this April break. I'm participating in the Spanish exchange, so I'm really excited. We're going to Granada in the south of Spain, so it's going to be, going to be pretty awesome. And that's all I have.
Hi, I just want to start off with, today, the weather was kind of crazy. Um, me personally, I was walking into the school and it felt like rocks were being thrown in my face from all the snow. Um, I know a lot of people were hoping that today was a snow day. I mean, we appreciated the delay. We really appreciated the delay, don't get me wrong, but I think the weather was just a little wacky out there. We could have used a snow day, but we made it work. We made it work. The day was amazing. Um, but because of the weather, sports teams did a cleanup a few weeks ago. Um, oh yeah, and today's sports were canceled, obviously. All the games today were canceled. And North Andover is having a cleanup day on April 21st. And also, this coming Tuesday is the NEMAS Conference, Northeast, re, Nor-
Northeast Massachusetts.
Yeah, Northeast Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. And so that conference is Tuesday. Our council is bringing, I believe, 15 people. I'm actually running for vice president, and so that's exciting. And also, tomorrow is the end of the third quarter at the high school, which is very exciting. School's almost over. That's it.
All right. Excellent. Good luck in your election.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the committee? No?
I just have one.
Sure.
The snow day before you go. Sets up an absence quarter four. You know, it's funny, I was thinking this morning, you know, I watched a lot of news last night. I was talking to the DPW, all the folks, all the things that go into making the decision because safety is the most important, but boy, I don't know what is happening in New England. In the winter, it doesn't snow, we only get rain. And, you know, last night, the forecast, rain here. The atmospheric pressure is such that we, we, you know, it's not going to be too bad. But I'm glad we got the delay in, I'm glad that we got everyone to school safely and home, and it's always a challenge. And I know the students always, always, when it's even raining out, it could be 50. They say, you know, the weather's bad tomorrow, Dr. Gilligan, but great point, so.
I was definitely thinking of you. I was like, I wonder what he's thinking right now. Because I remember talking about last time, how you called it a snow day and there was no snow outside. I was like, the pressure you must feel right now to make this decision than I before.
Isn't it amazing that the, you can be in a profession in weather forecasting and be incorrect 50% of the time, and people say, you're doing great.
I think what's even more impressive or, or interesting, not impressive, interesting, is that superintendents make this call, and believe me, I did not take any meteorology classes. Ever! But I'm good with radar. I'm okay connecting with the roads, but, um, great job, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Comment?
Good luck at your election and good luck at the state competition this weekend. Look, I will be peppering you next time to see how you did. I'm sure you'll tell us, though.
Congrats.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Is that at the high school, Ben?
This is at Winchester High School.
Is that Winchester High School? Okay, in case any of the people watching want to know. So that's great. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
All right, and so we want to thank, I didn't say your names before, I apologize, with Ben Abbott, Christiana Choi, or C.C., and Harper Barrios. So thank you, guys. Now go do your homework.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have, oh.
Now we got the, um-
Now we have the-
Superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report, please.
All right, so superintendent's report. First and foremost, I want to say that on March 28th, we had Wear Purple Day in North Andover. Not only was Wear Purple Day at the, in the schools, Wear Purple Day was to show our support for a current North Andover sixth grader, Savannah, who was undergoing significant surgery on Friday, and they asked students in the, in our schools to wear purple. Well, not only did students wear purple to support Savannah, the North Andover Police, the North Andover Fire, the Youth Center, Town Services, you know, all the small businesses, everywhere I looked that day was purple. I'm driving up 125, and I saw the, you know, the big signs that they put up that usually say kindergarten registration, or slow down, or it said, "Wear purple for Savannah, go Savannah, we are Savannah Strong," and-
Softball wore these.
Softball wore their purple, and, you know, I'd be remiss not to say Mr. Brown wore his Northwestern sweatshirt.
Yep.
And, but it was an awesome day, really good for her. I had a chance, and that's Savannah down front, I had a chance to go over and see her at the middle school, and the positive thoughts and the support of this community never ceases to amaze me. So Ms. Lathrop and I got to go in, and just a remarkable young lady, and we all, we wish her well and the best. So that was Purple Day for Savannah. Now next, I want to talk about, um, next I'd like to talk about the solar eclipse. Kudos to Ms. Lockham. Carol Lockham, our STEM Director, she really did a remarkable job putting out a lot of information. We put out a lot of information to parents in the individual newsletters, and tonight a blast went out to the entire district, you know.
It's going to go out tomorrow, right? Tomorrow, we postponed it today because we didn't want to conflict with some of the messages for the snow that was going out.
Okay, it's going out tomorrow. I stand corrected.
Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Lathrop. I did say to Ms. Lockham, Ms. Lockham, I can't see anything in these.
That's good.
I know that, Mr. Hicks. Last time there was an eclipse that I saw was probably in the early 90s, and I think I probably did glance up. But we have the glasses that were provided for every single student in the district to send home by, you know, purchased by the PTAC, the PTOs, really thankful about that. And in your packet and what's going home tomorrow is the, just that we're gonna have a partial solar eclipse with 94% coverage of the sun. Not safe to look directly in to the sun. And we've included a lot of information here for our folks. You know, in North Andover, it's more likely, the total eclipse time, I think it's like 3:33 PM or, you know, after school. And I know that, that people have been really excited about it, but there's been a lot of talk about the glasses, so I'm glad that we're able to get them for everybody. And I'm gonna need some help here, but we also want you to be safe here on the school committee, and you're gonna-
I haven't gotten mine yet. This is awesome. I was just beginning.
I have a ten pack of mine. Can you take mine?
You can have them.
This is good. I don't have one.
But it-
Did you have yours already? Yeah.
It's really cool. What's really cool is, you know, the ability, which we always try to do, whether it's after dark, whether it's the kid you saw tonight, whether, any of the programs that we have, is to tie real-life things into what we're teaching. And this is a cool opportunity. I'm not sure where the weather will be, probably snow. But we've got that. And so just wanted you to see that tonight, and that's it for the superintendent report.
And I was just saying, I know, community programs too, with KidStop is actually doing a field trip with the students and will arm them, and it has classes for them. So I think that's great, too, for those students that will still be at school. They're, they're gonna go out and be able to see it in a safe manner as well. So it's just a fantastic program that's, that's being offered through KidStop for those kids that are enrolled.
Really cool. And myself, Ms. Pakusi, Ms. Lathrop, Dr. Mealy, we will be out here by the Soldiers in Sale statue, right at dismissal at three, and we'll have our glasses on to be good role models. Looking forward to it.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gilligan. Any questions from the committee? Okay. Next we have the Chair's Report, but I think first, if you'd like to do your-
Yeah, apologies to the public, we forgot to put this in, on the agenda, but we talked about it last time. I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have the Educator Hall of Fame. Nominations are open. It recognizes North Andover educators for their decades' service, teaching, inspiring, and challenging our North Andover students. Our goal is to have nominations. They are due at the end, April 30th, and we then convene in May to review them. So please, you can go online to the Hall of Fame part of the webpage to fill out the nomination forms. They can be submitted electronically via the district website, or if you prefer, you can download the form, imprint it, and mail it, or drop it off here. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a review of the current SC, School Committee, subcommittees, and liaisons. Current ones. And so in your packet, you have a list here and there. We're, have some vacancies because some people have left us. And I reviewed the policies with respect to subcommittees, and they are appointed by the Chair when then they must be approved by the committee. These are for subcommittees. So what I guess what I'd like to do is, and some, I have had some input already individually on places you'd like to serve on this list, so I would encourage our new members to, you don't have to tell me right now, but if, unless you already know, but if there are things here where they say either Andrew McDevitt or Pam Petrowski, they need to be replaced. So if you'd contact me and let me know what you might be interested in, that'd be helpful. And then next meeting, I can make my appointments, or my suggested appointments, and then we can ratify them. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, so just, just to make it clear, well, negotiations for teachers and teaching assistants, that's, we don't need to fill that for three more years, so that's, that's good. Custodians right now is Alyssa, administrative assistance is Joe, and that's complete. So I guess that's in the same category as the T's and the TAs.
Yeah, we should add on cafeteria workers, I think, will be coming up this year.
Okay.
Or, yeah.
Yep, cafeteria workers, okay.
Food service.
So we'll need a new person for policy. We'll need a new person for the Kittredge School Building Committee. That one is gonna be separate.
What was the first one?
Policy, school policies.
I think we're all in favor of policy, aren't we?
Yes, but, no, no, what I need, we need, it's a two-person appointment to, there's a subcommittee on policy.
So what does it do?
So it, its responsibility is to propose any changes, if any are indicated. I would have to read the rest of it, that's what I recall.
Typically, they had to review our existing policies to make sure they're up to date, and then come forward to the school committee with any changes that might be necessary based on what's been going on. We can, we participate, we get them from MAS-C. They provide our policies and we tailor them to ourselves. But if any changes are made that we might have to put into ours, this, this subcommittee would bring those forward for review by the whole committee.
So in a nutshell, the person whose policy would work closely with Michelle McHugh would get the updates from MAS-C, would also get, typically with that is any legal changes. You know, state law will supersede, you know, existing policies as things change in the course of a year. And so it's typically the policy person, Michelle McHugh, and they'll work with town council to make the appropriate updates as we go.
So we're talking more about the policies of the school committee than we are policies of the district?
Correct, this is policies of the, well, it's both, right? Yeah.
Okay.
And they're posted, you can find them all on the, on the NAPS website, on the North Andover Public Schools website, has pointer to them. A lot of those just point again to MAS-C, right? But they're all there and laid out, and, you know, you can click through and get to individual ones.
I believe last February, Dr. Mealy, we did a big update of our financial, it was a policy F.
There were a bunch of changes.
There's a lot of small changes and legal references and cross-references that we updated in one small, or the only substantive one was updating our procurement policy.
Correct.
To be in line with the town and best practices.
And, and, Joe, are there, it's just the two members of the school committee that make up that subcommittee, right? There's no other members. Okay, so that one is, needs another person. Mr. Hicks is serving right now on the NAMM School Building Committee. I'm gonna talk about the Kittredge School Building Committee in a second, 'cause that's a special case. The Educator Hall of Fame is always the Vice Chair. The, and then there are liaison positions, which are, are represented, the school committees representatives, and these other organizations that take the lead and sort of interfacing with these other organizations. And then, I don't think I need to read them, they're all here, but the ones that are open are the Legislative Liaison, that was Pam, the PTO Presidents, which is presently Alyssa, but she's expressed an interest in moving, is that correct?
Yes, I have. I have put in a request to move from, from PTO Presidents to Policies, so I'll leave that up to the Chair.
Okay. So that will likely be open for everybody's benefit. So if you're interested, let me know. And then I'm the Health Advisory Council one for NA CPAC. Actually, didn't, didn't we, I don't know, nominate or, I think I appointed you, actually.
Yes, I was appointed as a liaison to the North Andover CPAC, so I do, I do attend all of those meetings. And then an additional school committee member rotates through to, so that every school committee member gets an opportunity to attend CPAC. So that, so we can only have two at a time. I'm the consistent one that's always there, and then everybody else rotates through the meetings.
Right, so there's two more meetings coming up. But I wanna go to one of those 'cause I missed, I had to trade last time, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably go to the one in June. So if anyone is interested in letting me know that you're interested in going in May, I'd appreciate it, otherwise I'll be hounding you. So somebody, we need to have, we need to all go through that.
And they are held on Zoom, or on video.
Yep.
I'd be happy to do the one in May.
Okay, thank you, Ed. All right, and then Joe serves on the, is our liaison to the Town Diversity Committee.
Just FYI, we'll get, those aren't, those aren't dates. Those aren't accurate dates. I don't know.
Oh, they're, oh, inaccurate dates, all right.
Which day? Both CPAC dates are inaccurate?
Yeah, those probably are there from last year, so we haven't come up with end-of-the-year dates yet, so.
Would anyone in the room happen to know those dates?
We haven't come, we haven't set them, I don't think we've set them yet for the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
And these are the current, so we're working on change, and these are what exist.
Right, that's true. That's not, that one doesn't change, but we do need to-
So are you asking, Mr. Chair, for folks to let you know what they're interested in?
Yes.
And we'll come back to the next one?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm, that's exactly what I'm doing. I'm asking-
I didn't know if you were volun, like, sometimes, Alyssa, you said you got volunteering. I think I heard a school committee member once say "voluntold" by the Chair.
Right, no, I'd like everybody to think about it. This is the first meeting for Ed and Kelly, they need, they should think about it, tell me what they're interested in. At least that's the way I'd like to do it. So please let me know. Now, we have to specifically talk about the Kittredge Building Committee.
It's in new business.
Oh, it's in new business, all right, so we'll do that then. Thank you. So now, regarding this Special Ed Review Subcommittee, I would like to make it an official school committee, subcommittee, as defined in, as defined, sorry, one minute. It's in here, I promise.
The policy is BDE, sorry.
BDE, thank you.
Yeah, and as you're bringing that up, I actually was doing some thinking today and came across policy BDF, which I actually think might be a better fit for this purpose. Still, all the things that we would want under the school subcommittee, but because it's an advisory committee, has a little bit more flexibility to do the work we would wanna do.
So BDF doesn't immediately suggest the content of it. You said-
It's formation of an advisory committee.
So BDF is a creation of an advisory committee like a CPAC that gives us more flexibility in being able to do the things we would wanna do. Some of the things that our public comment earlier talked of, we technically, I don't think we would need to follow the open meeting laws, but I still think those are a lot of really good practices to post, invite the public, make minutes, agendas, and et cetera. But also, as long as only two school committee members were there, we would not be breaking quorum rules. I think it would give us the flexibility that we need. So I would, I would just like to note that. I think it, it still falls under the school committee, which I think is what we should do to allow transparency and to be involved in the process. But I think it also would make, it is more aligned to the advisory committee that would exist if the superintendent saw the administrative function would, would look like, too. So I think it does the best of both of them.
I'd like to agree with Joe about that, and that's actually kind of similar to what the CPAC suggested. You still, it's still open, anybody can come. You can still notify people, but just a little easier when you're sort of thinking about things and working things out.
I think that's the key part, is that the people know when the meetings are, they know what the agendas are, they can see what's happening, and they can attend if they want. That, I think, is very important, and certainly in what I've just, in the four days, I've been sworn in, you know, heard from numerous, you know, community members, that being, being able to be part of this and being able to know what's being discussed and have it open is very important to the community and for the success of this.
And I would definitely agree, and actually I was doing some of my own research today on the differences between a subcommittee and an advisory council, and I, I was, I was on the same page. I think an advisory council would definitely be the way to go. But as far as being able to have that transparency, I think as we work to implement collaborative initiatives and making that happen, it's, I think it's really important that the community, that parents, that administration, teacher, everybody has that transparency that we all, I know everybody really advocates for. And I think that's really important throughout this process.
And I think we would still follow best practice, post agendas, location of meetings, take minutes, invite public to watch, sit, comment, hear from people. Sometimes you need to break off and engage with different, working in different groups or engage with other stakeholders, so it would give us a lot of that flexibility. Sometimes you can't do the work of the, of a committee in, like, in this setting, you have to go off and do some things and bring it back, and that would, I think would allow us to do that, so.
Right.
And I would, and the makeup, I would say, would still be, I would want the Executive Director of Special Education to be there, 'cause this is really important, and I wanna, like, collaborate with her, and I wanna collaborate with Dr. Gilligan, and with all the other stakeholders that are involved. So I think it gives us what we would want.
So just for everyone's, just to be sure, because I studied these today, so there are, there are a couple of differences between an official subcommittee of the school committee and the advisory committee. In an official subcommittee, the Chair, subject to approval by the committee, appoints the chairperson of the subcommittee and its members. In the advisory committee, it's just us as a group appointing the, what it says is appointments to such committees will be made by the committee, meaning the school committee. Appointment of staff members to such committees will be made by the school committee upon recommendation of the superintendent. So for an advisory committee, the, where I read this, the superintendent nominates staff people, we as a group, school committee as a group, figure out who we want on it. It's not an appointment thing by me, by the Chair. Whereas in the, in BDE, in the official subcommittee, it is appointed by the Chair. Of course, it has to be ratified. So, and then the other major difference is in the official subcommittee of the school committee, it's as, as you guys have, I think, pointed out, there have, agendas have to be posted, it has to be run fully under the same rules like these meetings run. Whereas the advisory committee is allowed to do, have working sessions without posting 48 hours in advance, for example, right? Public can still be notified, but there's not a 48-hour notice requirement. That's probably the biggest difference. So now that we've all had that, I guess, it seems, do I read the room right that you are all, well, go ahead.
I just have one more question.
Sure.
So in terms of, so the outcome and the weight that we would give the findings of whether it was a subcommittee or the advisory committee, is there any difference in terms of the weight of that or importance? 'Cause depending on what comes out of this, we're gonna need, likely need to work with FinCom, you know, work with the administration, work with the select, depending on what it is, right? This could be larger suggestions. Is there any difference to the weight of those recommendations or ideas?
I think, from my perspective, I think the weight of the suggestions would then, any weight or value that the suggestions are given would then be determined by us.
Okay, so it would all come back to this body?
Either way, I think it's gonna come back to us.
Right.
Okay. Just asking the question, I actually asked a question, I didn't know the answer to this.
No, but I think, that's my, that's what I would think. I could've been wrong.
Well, informally, I wanna make sure I'm understanding everyone's position on this, 'cause what I was going to do was actually propose an official subcommittee. But if, if four of the five members are telling me that they would, what I'm hearing is that everybody would prefer it be an advisory committee, I'm fine with that. But if that's the case, then in order to create it, we have to, somebody has to make a motion, we have, we have to, yeah.
Could, before we do that, I, there's some, a couple thoughts that I have. Not, not about what kind, so it's more about the content. Do you want to decide the kind first, or do you wanna hear the, the content, the substance first?
Well, if it's, if it's the first, if it's the, I'm calling it official, if it's, the actual terminology is, if it is a subcommittee of the school committee, then-
Which is looking unlikely, as you pointed out.
Correct. Then I would be proposing that, I would be proposing the entire thing. I would be, I would be proposing the, subject to this committee's approval, who the people are, right? Who the people are that are gonna be on it, and names of those people, which I would not be prepared to do tonight, right? I would, I would wanna take some time to do that. If it's the other one, then, if, the other one being an advisory committee, to get our terminology straight, if it's an advisory committee, it just says appointments to such committees made by, by the school committee. The superintendent appoints staff members. We all have to, well, that's actually all it says. And it limits the term to one year.
It could be extended.
Which could be extended, but just by definition it does. And they're charged with making recommendations to this committee.
So I'll tell you the subject, and then you can decide which you already want to do it.
Yep.
As I think about this, the central recommendation, to me anyway, of the, whatever you wanna call it, the consultants, was, however you wanna put it, that special education should be a service and not a program, and this has to do with greater, greater responsibility of regular classroom teachers to meet kids' needs, and obviously with help from, from special ed teachers and Title I teachers and so on. That's actually what I've been doing professionally for the last 20 years, and it sounds simple. This is a huge change when you really get into it, 'cause you're really talking about changing people's perspectives about what kids' needs and what the best way to meet them is. And in a way, you can think of this as maybe two topics all in one. One topic is, you can think of this as short-term, that, that- as short-term, that, that I gather from my contacts, such as they are with the CPAC, that there's some unhappiness about whether children on ed plans are always getting all the services their need. And this is sort of a short-term issue that we, you know, if that, if that is happening, then we want to address it sooner rather than later. Making the change to the kind of instruction that I think the report is, is hinting at, when, when my project did it, it takes two or three years. It's, it's a long process. And that would mean that, to the extent you're discussing that, you're going to want a people that, people on the committee that you wouldn't necessarily think about, like principals, regular education classrooms. I mean, obviously including, you'd also want special ed people. But it's a different focus, at least for that part of it. And this, this advisory group might even want to divide itself into a couple of subgroups, one concentrating on one subject and one on the other.
And it would be, they're discretion to do that.
Sounds good to me.
Well, I, I think, Mr. Chair, we have to think about, like, what, in creating any Subcommittee or Advisory Group or whatever, the superintendent's task or whatever it is, we have to be very clear about what the mission and focus of the group is. I feel like this is to go, for this particular case, it's to go through the report thoroughly, look at all the data that was supplied, look at all the recommendations, and to help prioritize and examine what steps should be, what are short, one-year, medium, three-year, longer-term, five-year plans. The implementation of that stuff is, I think, beyond the scope of what we do as a committee. And that, the, like, we, that's, in essence, that's us creating a policy, I guess, that we, we then want to see happen. And it's, then it goes right back to the superintendent and his job to, to operationalize that. I think that's the nature of our relationship. We, we create policy and he operationalizes it. And he, and that's what he would be happy, I'm sure, to do, right? So like, in the implementation of these things, I think, like, that, it goes back to him. But like, we can certainly, looking at it as, like, recommendations about how and when, and, like, focuses of PD is, is like, one thing. But then, it's not our job to make those arrangements and then implement the PD, or to create, find out who does it. That would be the administration's job. So I just want to make sure that we understand, like, what the mechanism is that we want to create, and like, what we want to do. But also recognize that what are, what is in our purview, and what our role is, and what the administration's role should continue to be. Because I want to make sure we, we remain professional and, and working with each other in a symbiotic way.
Okay. So back to my original question. So it, it would be silly for me to appoint, to come back next meeting with an appoint, with a suggested group and have you all vote no. So I don't want to do that. So do I?
C-B-E-D-E.
Sorry?
Can I C-B-E-D-E?
Yeah, E, the, the first one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I guess, my reading, I guess I, I'd just like to poll the room. Do I understand, Alyssa, you'd prefer it to be the second type, the Advisory Committee?
Yes.
This is not a vote. This is a discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, in my perspective, having looked at the policies, I, I would advocate for the Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Eventually, I will. Right now, I'm just getting opinions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I'm just, this is just discussion, this is just under the Chair's report.
No, no, it's fine.
Yeah, discussion.
You're looking at me.
Yeah, 'cause I'm, I'm trying to poll the, basically...
Yes. I, I agree with Joe and Alyssa.
Okay.
Yes, the Advisory, the only thing I would want to make sure, if we do Advisory Committee, is that we do treat it under the same guise of open meetings, that everything, we post agendas, maybe it's not the 48, we figure out what works within, but we have agendas, we have minutes, we have documents, and then the meetings are open.
Okay.
And that people can attend these meetings. That it's extremely, you know, that it's transparent, that the will, the ability to attend is there. That would be my only caveat, is that we hold ourselves to that standard.
And I think...
I think all of us agree with it.
Yeah, well, and that's the only way I would be in favor of it, personally, so...
Yep. So that's maybe that there's some way as we pass the, I, I don't know if that's appropriate, Mr. Chair, to do.
Oh, I think we can move it any way we want, right?
Well, I think, I, I think, Mr. Chair, we would, any action we would want to take with, for a Subcommittee or Advisory, we'd have, it has to be the will of the committee. We have to make a motion to create it. I think then we need to pause and take, until our next meeting, to figure out what are the positions we want on there.
I think...
And I don't think necessarily people, but the roles.
The roles, yeah.
Right. And BDF sets out in subsection six.
There's a bunch of questions.
Clearly instructions. And I, and I think we have, as a committee, need to kind of outline that and figure out how we're going to fill in those blanks to properly put this Advisory Committee forward with what's required in, in the policy.
All right. So accordingly, then, it'd be, since it's the will of the committee to move in this direction, I won't make the other proposal I was going to make. Forget about that. But what I would like to ask everyone to do is, is maybe the, I'm just trying to think of what the best mechanism is to kind of come to an agreement next time. You know what I mean?
Is it appropriate for each of us to write down his or her list of positions and then send it to everybody?
No, that, definitely not. But I think they can...
If you have thoughts, Dave, it might be best for them to get them to you.
To me. Right. I think the best way to do this, yes, is such opinions and thoughts, specifically about the composition, like, some of the things, how many...
And the things are outlined in the...
In the policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can read them, right? The length of time each member is being asked to serve.
Mission focus.
Yeah. Assignment, to fulfill the extent and limitations of responsibility. So it's mission and focus. Resources will provide approximate dates in which we want to receive our report back. You know, policies governing all of this.
Can you send us a copy of?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Or have Michelle send it to us?
Is it the intent to vote on the committee once we have all these other options in place? Or to, to, to move to form an Advisory Committee and then come back and...
Actually, I think we could do that. We could, I think it would be in order to, to move to form the Advisory Committee, and then, but not, not, not fully define it yet. And then have each member, we could do it either way, actually. Have each member send me individually, separately, their, their opinions on how it should be constituted. And then I can act, can try to consolidate that and bring a, a motion next time.
A proposal of the form that's in public.
Of the form. Yeah.
That makes some tweaks to.
Right.
Yeah.
So who, who is going to bring the motion?
I, I can, I can do it. Yeah.
Well, we, so we'll share our thoughts with you. You'll consolidate them. And we will discuss the combination of all those in public at our next meeting.
Right. And then, actually, it probably makes sense to wait and move, move to the creation to that point.
I think we could do that now, or...
I think we can.
Either, either way is fine with me.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we create an Advisory Committee to the School Committee for the purposes of investigating the Urban Collaborative Report, and to make recommendations back to the School Committee. And we will, and to determine the exact membership and roles that would be part of that in the time at our next meeting.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Motion's made. Second, if I could just amend it with one slight little thing?
Friendly amendment, you'd be welcome.
Friendly amendment to identify it as, as defined under policy...
Yes.
BDF.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's clear?
It is. Thank you.
All right. Perfect. Then, any further discussion on that? All right, hearing none, let's vote.
Yes.
Mr. Hicks, Ms. Carmier.
Yes.
Mr. Moskowitz, Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. All right. We will have an Advisory Committee to the School Committee under policy BDF. Will, everyone will send me their thoughts on how it should be composed. And what it's, actually, please, also, it's proposed mission and...
Yeah. Oh, could I?
Focus.
I'm sorry.
And, I'm sorry, one more thing. Just, let me finish. Deliverables, what the committee will deliver?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now?
I would, I should have moved, but wasn't thinking quickly enough, that there should be two co-chairs, one from the committee and one from the administration.
I think it would be appropriate to include that in your recommendations that you send to the Chair in advance of the next meeting.
Okay.
So, okay. All right. Okay. Thank you, everybody. That was a little complex, but okay. All right, that's done. I think we're still in the Chair's report. Wow.
Chair Brown, you're still in the Chair's report.
Still in the Chair's report.
Dr. Gilligan is feeling good about himself right now. He was the quick report tonight.
All right, there's just, just one more thing. Boy, and I sound like a recently-departed school committee member when I say that. Just one more thing! I brought forward last time, last meeting, some recommendations, or a list of, of expiring initiatives from Mass Association of School Committees. And I'm searching for it. It's probably in this pile. Oh, it's up there. Perfect. Resolution's set to expire in November. There are a couple of these that I would, I would really like to see. I've, I've read them today. There are a couple that I would really like to see us sponsor. And for all I know, some other school district has already done that, because there's like, no way for me to check. They, they were basically soliciting all school districts in Massachusetts if they were interested in seeing these renewed, right? To let them know. So I would need the committee's permission to do that. And if you could scroll, Jim, if you could scroll down a little farther, there are two that really caught my eye. One is, there it is, poverty and children, that one.
We're against that, aren't we? Poverty and children.
We are against poverty and, we are poverty, we are against poverty. We are for children.
In favor of children. But poverty in children, we don't want.
We don't want that.
Not together.
No, but that whole point of this is to start, to, you know, make recommendations to improve the plight of, it's like, one-third of Massachusetts.
So does MASC agree with us about those?
What's that?
Is MASC in agreement with us on those?
Yeah, I think you can, you can click on it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. So, actually...
Now, you have to click, you have to click again.
What, if it's appropriate, could we, I, I was just teasing about that one, but I really would be interested in the one about preschool.
That was the other one that I'm interested in as well. So if, if you just take a second to read this, right, you know, submitted in 2015 from Framingham. So this, basically, they just need a sponsor. MASC needs some district, could be us, I think it would be nice for us, to say, yes, we want to sponsor this. I don't think it requires anything else from us, other than to say that we want to see this, this effort continue.
Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate, then, you said there was two that you would be interested in us sponsoring?
Correct.
Is it appropriate, then, for you to, what would be the second one? The preschool one?
I believe it's, yeah. Go up a little bit.
Universal quality pre-kindergarten access.
Yes, that's it.
Would it be appropriate, then, for...
Could we see that one?
It's just thinking. Clicked on it.
To us to look at the, those two between now and our next meeting, and then we can have a, we can be ready to have a discussion about it?
All right, that sounds good.
And, Mr. Chair, if you would just remind us when we need to have, let MASC know.
Oh, I think it's not until...
By November.
November, yeah. We have time. We definitely have time.
Would you be open if there were other ones that we looked at and thought we were sponsoring as well? Or is there, I mean...
No, those are just the two that jumped out to me. I, I'm open to that.
So if, so what's, I've been working on that one a little bit. And I've been wondering about the data we have to support it. And I actually spent most of a day down at the State House and asked the people at the early, Department of Early Education, what, what we know about students that come out of preschool. And the answer was, we know how many of them there are. We, we know absolutely nothing about how they come out, and whether they're any different than the ones who didn't go. And it's not like I'm against having this. I'm in favor of it. But the fact that we really don't have any notion of whether it's actually making a difference kind of bugs me. And I've been pushing, it seems like elementary common sense, which is maybe why I'm having so much trouble with it, getting anywhere with it, that a universal kindergarten intake assessment would, would be huge. Because then we would know, do kids coming out of preschool do better than ones who don't? I assume the answer is yes. But we spent a billion and a half dollars on this already, and we just don't know. And then we also don't really know which districts are doing the best job, because we have no idea where kids start. We know their third grade scores, but we don't know where they were when they came out. And it seems that if we're, as we should, support the gist of this, I think it's going to be a good idea to say, it'd be nice to have some better idea. Oh, here's another thing. We actually don't know who was in preschool. We know who's in state-funded preschool. We have no idea who was in, who was in Head Start. We just don't know. I mean, that's astounding. You know, you want to say this makes a real difference, but we have low-income kids that we know are in, in state-funded preschool, and we have low-income kids who are in federally funded Head Start, and we don't even know who they are. So it would really be nice if MASC would point out that as we're doing this, it would make some sense to have some way of, you know, assuring ourselves that it's making a difference.
Well, one thing I can do is contact them and see, see what they say about that. If you scroll down a little farther, Jim, please.
In this one?
Yeah. So what, what the whole idea here, right, is that be, you know, by sponsoring us, by sponsoring this, what we're saying is, hey, we want MASC to file or support legislation that will provide full capital. And, and, so basically, we're, they're going to advocate for this with the legislature. That's what we're, that's what this resolution asks them to do.
Right, right, right.
And so we're just saying publicly, hey, we support that. Right? So, I mean, your question's a valid one, I think. They're positing that it's true. If you go up again a little bit, it says, whereas...
Everybody posits it's true. Nobody actually bothers to measure it.
To measure it. Okay.
Actually, I, at one point, met somebody that was involved in a big national program to promote early literacy. And he heard about our organization. I guess, actually, we, we approached him. And I said, you know, we could actually get you that data, because we were working with whatever we were working with, 20 districts, and the districts could find out. And I said, it wouldn't cost much money, but we could actually find out. And you know, he never got back to me about that, which struck me as a little odd.
Okay. Yeah. Well, in any event, I, I request of the committee to review these, see if they agree with me that these are two they'd like, we'd like to publicly say we, we sponsor. It's no economic impact. There's no financial impact to the district to do that. And then if there are any others you'd like to consider, please let me know. Okay? All right, thank you. So that actually finally concludes the Chair's report. So...
All right. So with that, Mr. Chair, turning it over to Joe Hicks to talk about the middle school. Right? That's where we're on?
That's where we are. Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. So, update on the middle school. Things are going great over there. I love seeing the building. Most days, I drive up or down, I don't know, from, towards Andover on 125. But the other day, I came the other way, down 125, toward, like, going towards Haverhill. And it just was a very different vantage point to see, like, the, the awesome opening in that corner over there, and like, the work that's being done. You can see all the way inside and, like, walls being framed. So, okay, here's my official stuff. The concrete deck has been completed. Exterior sheathing has been installed and completed. The parapet wall has been insulated and closed with exterior sheathing. Steel, structural steel has been wrapped, other than one little thing that's going to be done very soon. Framing of the first floor is very close to completion, and the second floor is in progress. Majority of the plumbing roughing work on the first floor has been completed, and the second floor roughing is, has been started. HVAC duct work has begun on the first floor and is in progress. Site work is ongoing with drainage tie-ins to underground, to tie in the underground from the roof drains. The retaining wall installation is in progress. Conduit installation in the crawl space is in progress. Electrical boxes are being installed throughout the first floor, and wood blocking on the roof is currently being installed. And roof work will continue the next few weeks. So that's all the stuff that has just happened. And let me just switch over to the other, to the look ahead. We have some really great things coming up as well. In the next few days, no, that's all the stuff that, everything is being done. It's all the same stuff I just said. So good, good stuff is happening. We do have a thinking meeting next week. But we've also recently approved the tech plan and the camera plan, and we are, we're still on schedule for August.
I say, we were driving by it the other day with my second grader, and she saw, she said, what's going on at the middle school? I said, it's an addition. She said, will it be done by the time I go? I said, I sure hope so.
I do have to say, it looked like a big, giant, jiffy pop, popcorn.
It does. It looks like a big pile of nothing, and then all of a sudden you have a building. And then it looks the same for a while, as all the work's happening inside. But just as a reminder, and for the, for... But just as a reminder and for the, for the new folks, um, the general plan is that the addition is being built this year. It'll be ready for occupancy and should be, we should get it in August, so it'll be ready for students in September. We'll then use that as swing space for the eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade consecutively. So that we can then move those kiddos into that space and then replace floors and HVACs in the existing building. And then the lighting and curtain in the auditorium. And then, so all that work will happen at the beginning of next school year and the space, the addition will be ready for its regular use, after all those other things, um, by the middle of, like one year from now.
So what is its regular use? What will be its regular use?
16 new classrooms, is that the right number?
Correct. But some of those classrooms will be for other spaces, maybe some special education programs.
24,000 extra square feet of stuff. And then we have, we do have the, in the budget for next year with the, with the town manager, we have allocated a number of new positions for the middle school, correct, sir, uh, Dr. Gilligan?
Correct.
You will, you, you and Dr. Millie could better speak to what the use of the building would be.
Yeah, actually, the principal has been working with the staff to figure out the best layout once it's completed.
It's exciting, I mean, this is.
I know science space on the first, one of the floors, special ed space.
Yeah, it's a remark, I mean, to, to think in this town that would actually have this built. There's not many kids with, some of the projects I've seen over the years to be able to say, yes, it will impact. You're a Thompson student, so it's, it's exciting and, you know, it's roughly the size of the main building at Kittredge. You know, 26,000 square feet or so, so.
Most importantly, it'll be on time and on budget.
Yep. And I'm not going, uh, do you want to introduce the Kittredge?
Oh, well, that's coming up in, uh.
We're getting there.
Uh, that's new business, we still have.
No, 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 the Kittredge.
Update.
School committee.
Oh, sorry, yes, Kittredge update. That will now be Mr. Millie, uh, present this meeting. Dr. Millie.
Okay. So as you know, we hired a design firm, Colliers, who is our O P M, our, our owner's project manager on the middle school project. It's also the same for the Kittredge. They've been excellent to work with. So, uh, Machado Solveti has been selected as a design firm. We had a meeting with them. Uh, we met all the major players that will be taking part in our project. And they went over the timeline. Unlike the middle school, it's kind of a, you get to see the difference between an M S B A project and a town-led project, timing-wise. It's great because it'll be about 50% reimbursement that we'll get for this project from M S B A. But we will not probably start construction until the summer of 2027 and complete it to, uh, 2029. So moving right along, Colliers keeps us on track with the, uh, M S B A timeline. And so the next thing that will be happening is kind of exciting. Uh, there'll be a lot of hurry up and wait, but the next thing will be, um, some reach, outreach to the community, uh, to get some feedback. You know, one of the things they have to do is design many different options, including new or, um, uh, existing and reno, different locations on the site. So they'll be getting feedback from the community as they put their designs together.
Um, Dr. Millie, is there any, are we voting on any funding this upcoming time meeting?
Design, design funding.
So we'll, at this time meeting, we'll, we'll go to the town to ask for money to design.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct.
The new buildings.
And the town has planned for that.
Yes. That, that, and that was part of the master plan sheet, right?
That's what made it attractive for the M S B A.
Correct, it's part of the capital. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, that's our Kittredge test, the school building committee updates. Next we have old business. We have second read and vote on the Student Opportunity Act.
Yeah, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Lathrop. So, um, simply put, this allows us to continue to apply for the grants, uh, in the state system. We have, as you know, have done very well with the grants, um, with the Acceleration Academies, with a whole host of them. And some of them, North Edward might not even traditionally qualified for, and we've got them. So, um, every little bit helps and it's been terrific and I'll turn it over to Ms. Lathrop.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions if you had them from last week. But again, just sort of reiterating what Dr. Gilligan said, this is our Student Opportunity Act plan that we submit to the state. It's a three-year plan. It shows them the work that we're going to do that will make us viable candidates for the grants that they put forward. We have had incredible success with grants this year and doing some incredible work. We have three main, our three main initiatives are continuing the use of high-quality instructional material across all grade levels in schools. Continue to develop and refine our comprehensive approach to literacy education. And then to develop and use a structured M T S process to implement academic supports and interventions for our students.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, um, like to make a motion to accept the Student Opportunity Act plan as presented in the packet.
Thank you, motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Uh, Ms. Lathrop or Dr. Gilligan, um, so if we were to say no to this, we would be unable to then apply or for grants, or it'd just be not as viable.
We would be unable to apply.
So, so for us to be able to continue to get some of the funding we've been getting, we really want to say yes.
That would be great.
Got it, thank you.
It's hard to think of any reason we would say no, isn't it?
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think that, that might be the point Joe was making.
Mr. Chair, do you, what was the, so it looks at three, so three different programs we were able to fund with these grants so far, I mean.
Not necessarily. So these are our three sort of major initiatives, that these are the sort of encompassing what we're looking at. But there are lots of other things that were, um, included in our, you know, Student Opportunity Act. And we can apply for different grants that may be not necessarily, but this encompasses all. And then overall, we're looking at the first, sort of the top part, targeting some of our students' improvement areas that we, um, have seen. And then we have chosen, um, so you have to set your targets and we have chosen to accept the targets that the Department of Ed, um, gave to us through N C A S.
And so in terms of what we've gotten, just to kind of understand sort of the scope of the grants, do you know roughly how much we've got in one school year from, in grants?
I, I think the important thing with the Student Opportunity Act is that the Student Opportunity Act was coming out and they said that we were going to get a lot of money and then COVID hit. So there isn't necessarily, and that's a, a kind of misleading, it doesn't necessarily, there's not necessarily an amount of money attached. What they did is we did have an increase, um, I think it was last year, it was like the first time we probably saw an increase in that money. And so, uh, it doesn't mean that this money tied to this, but continuing, um, what we've started allows us to apply for the grants.
Okay, so there was, was there no funding? No, I'm just wondering to, what, I mean, I'm all for doing this, I'm just wondering kind of what, the amount of funds, if we know roughly what we've gotten prior years.
What are some of the grants that we have been able to get?
Uh, so we have an M T S S grant, we have, um, the deeper learning grant, we have, um, we just received the genocide grant. Um, we have obviously our federal grants, we have our Title I grant, Title II A grant, Marcy has tons of grants.
So that's all under the, all of those things.
So for example, like, you know, we were able to run an acceleration academy for February and that was $288,000.
And so that was part, so all of that, so it's a lot of funding for the school.
Yeah, if we can, if they accept us, which they have been, we've had incredible success with Ms. Marks, prior to Ms. Lathrop and Ms. Lathrop has continued this year.
No pressure at all. What was I going to say? And what they're looking for, for the vote from the school committee is that the Department of Education is looking to say that you support the work that we're doing. So therefore, when we apply for grants, it's, they, you know, you're saying that you, you support the work that we're doing.
You mean, there's, that the Department of Education can be comfortable in knowing that the school committee isn't later going to say, actually, we don't want that money, we're not going to do it.
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, let's vote. Uh, Ms. Conant?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Moskowitz? Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
So that passes. All right, now.
Keep applying.
Yes, apply, apply, apply. New business, first read on the Crest capital fund limit increase. Okay. So it's the, uh, the purposes, the increase, what they're trying to do is increase the limit on their capital fund from $650,000 to $2 million. Uh, this is just a first read, it's in your packet.
But not actually increase the assessment if I, I mean, I tried puzzling that one out for quite a while.
Yeah.
That's what I gathered from it.
It's just to put a ceiling on it, a bigger, a higher ceiling on it. And Dr. Gilligan, you're our, our rep to Crest.
How many, how many students do we have there?
Uh, at Crest, uh, we can get you that number. I, I, I don't want to hazard a guess.
I didn't mean to catch you unawares.
Yeah, I mean, it can fluctuate where, you know, Crest is one of our collaboratives and Seen is the other. So we're going to two collaboratives.
So this is just they, right now they're only allowed to save up to 650, they want to be allowed to save up to 2 million, although they only have 428 right now. So.
Right.
I, and it has to go to us because as a member, they need our permission to do that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That's the sense I made of it.
We had 12 students this year.
Yeah, it's, we have 12 there?
Twelve.
Had 12.
Had 12 students this year.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it says Crest requests to only increase the funding limit, not dedicate additional funds.
Correct.
And we'll, we will vote on this next time, because we have to do it within four to five days, which would make that deadline may second.
Yep.
So.
We, we're within the deadline.
All right.
Is there, do we know, is there any downside to voting to increase this?
I, I don't, based on my read of this, I think it's just, it's just allowing them, they, obviously there's, uh, their bylaws or however they're organized prohibits them, requires them to.
There's no, there's no.
Yeah, I can't see a downside.
No downside to it.
I can't see a downside, unless we didn't trust, unless we didn't trust them to run their own organization, in which case we would.
Bigger problems.
Right, we would.
Housekeeping.
Yeah.
The first paragraph means we think that they want to do some stuff.
Representative.
And they want to save for that stuff.
Yeah.
But they're not allowed to save the money to do that stuff. And things are getting more expensive.
Right. And so to, Ed's question, yes, Dr. Gilligan is our liaison to them.
So good public sector management is that instead of spending all the money you've got at the end of June, saving it, assuming that you're allowed to, so that you've got a cushion. And if we're, if that's all we're doing, it just makes common sense.
So I understand, is that your understanding?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've got a new executive director. He's a former superintendent for many years in, um, Fitchburg. And, um, Rob Jokola is the executive director. And, um, they're in a new facility. And so at this time, they're looking to increase that limit, uh, but not what they're putting in.
All right. And then we have, um, any other comments on that? Okay, then the next item we have is first read on FY25 revolving accounts, Dr. Millie.
So normally I would say, as we do every year, um, we have brought forward the revolving accounts. But since we have a few new members, uh, I think it makes sense just to kind of explain what these accounts are used for. So we have two large revolving accounts that are pretty much enterprise funds. That means that they are self-sufficient. Whatever revenue they bring in covers their expenses and they don't really cross with the operating budget of the school department. So community programs and food services are two of the, of the two of those enterprise funds. You know, community programs, which is what first one you see offers up programs, charges, um, fees, uh, to participate in those. They offer, also provide, you see it as K S and B C up there, that's Kid Stop and Breakfast Club. And they offer those services and, and collect and they have all the, in what you see in red are all the expenses for offering those programs. And food services is the same. They used to charge an amount for, uh, lunch, but with the, um, decision made by the state of Massachusetts, it's going to, it was during COVID that they reimbursed for all meals. All meals were free. And they have decided to continue that. We hope it continues for a very long time. And so it's interesting because if this was five years ago, prior to COVID, I'd be telling you how well community programs continues to do. Because they were always doing very well. They offered a lot of programs, had a lot of participants and they turned a profit, so to speak, each year. Whatever money they have in surplus is meant to be used to, um, improve programs and offerings. And food services was always just making it. But that has turned completely. COVID, we saw a, uh, big drop in participation, um, for a couple of years. And they're kind of now just getting back to pre-COVID in community programs. But because of the reimbursement for food services, they now have, um, are making a, a good surplus each year. That our manager, who you'll meet at some point when she gives us a recap, um, does an excellent job of managing the whole operation. But she's using those funds to improve, um, our offerings and the facilities, the cafeterias. Uh, and you'll see those going forward, um, in the near future. So those are the enterprise funds. And then all the others are kind of a mix in that, um, they have user fees associated with them. And those user fees can only be used for parts of that, um, activity. So for instance, athletics has a user fee, but they can only be used for, as you can see, maybe transportation or, um, officials, the referees, some materials and supplies can only be used for athletics. Same goes with transportation, um, and the preschool. Preschool has tuition, uh, but again, they can, uh, the money that comes in can only be used for preschool expenses. And then the other ones are, um, an opportunity to take in the funds and then again, use them for specific expenses associated with that. Custodial overtime, when we rent out our facilities, and those two you can see custodial overtime and rental fees, that money comes in and is used to cover the overtime that our custodians do, um, for covering events for the community. And then the others, we don't see a lot of activity in these, but every once in a while we do. So we need a place for those funds to go and then be expended from. So non-residential special education, we provide some, uh, services to, uh, other communities. And this is where that money would go if, when they pay us and then we could use it for special education expenses. Extra stipends doesn't come up very much at all. Unrestricted donations, if, for instance, somebody just donated, um, without any purpose to that donation, it would go in here and then the school committee could decide how it wants to spend it. So just to go, that's, those are our revolving accounts. And, um, as you can see, uh, not much changes in community programs from this year to next year. Rick Galant, another excellent director that we have, uh, is anticipating revenue from Kid Stop and Breakfast Club to be about the same. Uh, he has increased the offerings in the Excel program that we have. So he anticipates about $40,000 more in revenue there. Receipt from summer school, he anticipates that being down a little bit. And then, um, the expenses, you can see, the biggest change there is that he had two, um, in the clerical, and one left and he didn't have the need to fill it. So he's leaving that at one and that's why you see 86,000 for this year and 53 for next. But he's showing, um, anticipated expenses to be about $40,000 less than anticipated revenue. Food services, you can see again, continuing because all the meals are reimbursed. And one of the things that I want to highlight, um, when we look at, well, I'll, I'll wait a second to talk about that. But food services, you can see lunch and breakfast receipts, he's anticipating, um, some of that being down, but it's kind of transferring to the state. The federal had done, so been doing some reimbursement, but the state's really picking up the bulk of it now. So you can see, uh, that that is the largest increase in revenue. Expenses don't change much. Where they were asked to split, um, their supplies that were specific to breakfast. And so you can see these, this is a line that was added. It used to be one and a half million for this year and now it's 1.2 million and 150,000 are the anticipated expenses for next year. So you can see she's showing a healthy expected surplus, um, of a little under a million dollars for, uh, food services for next year. So. Yep, yep.
When she comes at the end of the year, will she tell us what, what that could be used for?
Yeah, she actually, you'll see, um, she has done some, um, bids that have been. Yeah, she actually, you'll see, she has done some bids that have been put out to companies that refurbish cafeteria, make them more welcoming and more pleasant, and even help direct traffic when we're trying to get students to put, you know, at the end of the day, or end of the lunch, put them in the right place. She'll be coming forward with a recommendation that includes that as well. Yep.
And because it's a revolving account, money that's brought in, like some of the other ones, money that's brought in through the school lunch program can only be then used in the school lunch program.
Right, so some of it.
Bring money in from there and then use it to pay for something else.
No, there are some things that aren't strictly food services, for instance, our noon attendance at the elementary schools cover the lunch and recess. The part of their time that is for lunch, they, we can charge food services for that. And also with community programs and food services, they're using up our custodian time and our electricity, you know, our utilities, and so based on a factor that's determined by the state, we can charge indirect costs to those two programs as well. But other than that, they can only spend, so she's been buying new freezers and fencing in outdoor freezers and things like that. And what I was going to talk about with the other, like athletics and transportation and preschool, we are seeing over the last few years, especially over this last year, an increase in free and reduced eligible students. So our, our revenue is going down in those three, and that's going to impact our operating budget because we've been relying on that revenue to offset some of the expenses associated with those three activities.
Could you say something exactly what you meant, we have fewer, more students, and so we have less revenue?
No, we have more students who are eligible for free and we do so.
Yes.
The amount, so for instance, instead of, let's say, 300 students paying $300 for user fees for any of them, you might have only 200 who are paying and 100 who are not.
I get it.
Yep.
But you're not talking about food services now?
No, I am not, I'm talking about athletics.
Okay, that explains it.
Yep, transportation, where, so those support themselves.
I get it.
Yep, so what, when you see our request for next year, we are keeping the amounts where they were, but I did show you the actuals for FY24, where you can see athletic receipts are down to 304, when traditionally, they'd been between 330 and 340. And the same with transportation, traditionally, they've been 340 to 350, we're looking at 317 for this year, so you can see the impact of the increased free and reduced.
Have we seen a decrease in the number of participants, or people using?
No.
Like, the number of participants is the same?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yes, yep, and so we're keeping them the same just because it's a guess as to what we will collect, and maybe participation increases, and then, because otherwise, we would have to come back to the school committee for change to that account. We can only spend what we bring in, so it doesn't matter how much, just as long as it's in budget, we can't, we can't exceed it without a vote of change, so we're just keeping it the way it is.
Dr. Mealy, when it comes to these revenues and these increase in, in reduced and free services, do you see any type of patterns throughout, or are they just sporadic, or how long do these typically last, is it random?
No, so what we're seeing is it really kind of trends with the economy, the number of students who are eligible. And so we're seeing in the last, like, year, year and a half or so, that more and more students are becoming eligible. Yep.
That's a more recent phenomenon, that's not been like a trending line over a long time, that's like in the last, you said, two years?
I'd say that prior to COVID, we saw a kind of a.
It's flat?
Flat slope, no, a little bit of a slope, and then now we're seeing a steeper one.
And just so it's clear, so the, the numbers, so the 20, the FY24 numbers are anticipated.
Projected actual.
Projected actual, whereas the other ones match the 24 budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So it's not, we're not increasing our budget from 304, for example, for athletics, from 304 to 342, the budget was 342.
Right, I just, I, I put it in there as the actual and wanted to highlight that, that that's what we're projecting to receive, even though we budgeted for 342.
You're gonna, it now looks like we'll end up at 304.
Right, yeah, and if that trend continues, it could be even lower.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, moving on to the next item, Kittredge School Building Committee. Now, I reviewed prior to the meeting, so what the agenda says is that we're going to seek to suspend the rules and actually vote on, on nominating a person for that. However, when I read the town bylaw on this subject, it requires us to, actually, it requires us to post this. So let me find it. Must be in this pile.
It's on screen two.
Oh, yeah, so if you read that, if you read the, that's our town bylaw about how school building committees are formed. And what it says is that if you go down a little farther, right, all, all regular members of the committee shall be appointed by the school committee and confirmed by the select board. Then it says, "An advertisement shall be published on the town website inviting residents to submit applications, including information regarding their credentials to serve and their relevant experience." We have to give two weeks' notice for that, and so in other words, the general, we, we don't just get to appoint a school committee member, it has to be open to the public, that's how I read this.
So there's no position reserved for the school committee?
There is.
So what we're going to do is, this committee will recommend someone to serve in Mr. McDevitt's place, and the select board will then take a vote, they're the ones who will take the vote, this group will recommend.
But the select board could conceivably decide that the school committee representative will not be a member of the school committee.
So if, as I read this bylaw, right, it says, "We have to open this up and, and put a notice on the website."
Right.
And, and allow the public to apply for the, for that position.
There's nothing in there that says that any of the seven should be members of the school committee, if I read it right.
Right, so as a little history, this was a policy that was written, bylaw that was written last year, passed by town meeting last May. So when we created the Kittredge School Building Committee initially, we were following, that was created under different guidelines. So now we have to follow this, and I think because we have questions about this particular procedure, and we definitely don't want to mess up anything with our MSBA.
Funding.
Funding, and the rules that we have to follow, that, because we have some questions, it'd be best to do this next time.
Right, so what my, my plan is, based on learning this today, is that I'm going to seek the town council's opinion, right, to make sure I'm reading this correctly, but if I am, then we will follow the procedure that's outlined here, open it up, let people apply for it, members of the committee can apply for it, I mean, I'm, I'm going to apply for it, just saying, obviously, any of you can as well, and we'll go through this process. If I misunderstood this, then I'm sure that the county council will straighten me out, but I, and I read it like 12 times, and it seems pretty clear to me that, that we have to follow this process.
And it's one person we get to recommend?
Well, it, it.
Is it seven?
It says, "All regular members of the committee shall be appointed by the school committee," so presumably, all the other ones have been appointed already.
They exist already.
They exist already.
Committee, this is the simply fill the vacancy.
Oh.
The school committee member Andrew McDevitt served, so this committee, you know, will post this, and then they'll make a recommendation.
To replace Andrew. What's that?
The bylaw, this is kind of a miss in the bylaw.
Yeah, so I think we recognize, as much as we tried to make it clear and a good process last year, which was the goal, for clarity about how to do these things, I think we will have to go back to the town moderator and the select board and make some amendments to this for next year, to bring to town, so. That's, this is what you learn with a new bylaw.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I mean.
And we want to make sure we do things right according to this.
All right, so, so I, this is just informational, but that, that's my intent as chair to do. Consult with the town attorney, make sure I'm reading this correct, if I'm reading correct, then I'll ask, I guess I'll work with, probably Dr. Mealy with you or Dr. Gilligan with you, to make this process happen, right, to, to do the, put it on the town website.
At this stage in the project, there's no harm in taking the time.
Yeah.
Right.
First of all, this.
Dr. Mealy, can you check the MSBA guidelines to see if a school member, a school committee member is a requirement, according to them? You don't have to do that right now, but I think that would be helpful for this conversation.
I'm pretty sure it is, and then that's what the selection of the current members, including Mr. McDevitt, was based on.
Right, so.
Yeah.
The two things might be in conflict, so we just want to take the time to do it, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
All right.
So then, someone should inform Mr. McDevitt that he is still officially on the committee.
Mr. McDevitt, as you're watching this at home, I think you're officially still on the committee, there might be a meeting coming up.
We'll let you know about the meeting coming up, I think it's right after break.
Right, and out of curiosity, I get notices of those, I'm, I'm allowed to attend, I assume, right, as.
You are an ex officio member.
Ex officio member as chair, yeah.
As according to the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah, according to that, yes. Okay, so.
Correct.
Clear as mud, but that's, that's where we're at, that's where we're at with that, okay, I just didn't feel good about, I can't ignore that, all right?
Yep.
So, okay, there's that, that C, and then we have another, the last item of new business, this is the town meeting Article II recommendation. Someone would like to summarize that?
Well, I have to make the motion, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move, well, we have to make the motion, then we can suspend, yeah. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to favorably recommend Article II for the town meeting warrant for this upcoming town meeting in May.
I second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded, but in order to do that, don't we have to suspend the rules?
Yeah.
Okay.
And usually, I'll, I'll make the motion, but I'll say this first, I'm usually am not a fan of suspending the rules, but this is coming to us from town, and we need to make the recommendation so that it can be printed, or it can be part of the town warrant publication.
And if I'm not mistaken, this is a very common article that comes up out.
This is a common article that comes up every single year?
And has been passed unanimously.
Right.
Every single year.
All right, so I mean.
It can't, it has to be voted on every year, it cannot just be voted, say, oh, we agreed.
Right.
You mean it expires?
Correct, it's a one-year approval, and you have to do it every year.
So it's like a budget appropriation.
Yep, and this allows us to, or allows Dr. Mealy, to, and others, to negotiate extensions onto contracts so that we can get better pricing, which we usually take advantage of with our transportation.
Transportation, yeah, not too many others.
Yep.
Yep.
But, but we got, we get better bus transportation pricing if we sign up for four years than.
Not just us, but the town manager as well.
Right, because if I could ask, I mean, this is just obviously something that we should have done, you know, two weeks ago or whatever, maybe adjust our calendar, or like, why, why does it happen that we're sort of?
Because we have to get, it's.
It has to come from them first.
Yeah.
Oh, it has to come.
Has to go by select board first, or, yeah, in the order of the town business, this is when we get it.
Oh, so we're always in this position of having to.
I don't know if it's always Article II, I mean, if it's always Article II, then we could take some action earlier in the year, but I think we wait to find out if there are a group of articles that they need a recommendation from the school committee from.
I see, so we're sort of almost always going to be in this law.
And so they typically, like, the school committee is typically, we do two reads on most.
Right, that's why we're suspending, we need to suspend rules.
And the, the select board, they just, they present and vote, yeah.
Oh, okay, so then we get caught in a little bit of a time crunch always.
Then I would move to suspend the rules of a second read to be able to vote on the first read of town meeting warrant Article II.
Okay. I second. All right, and we'll take the motions in that order.
We have, well, we have to vote to suspend the rules, and then we can vote on the, on the recommendation.
Yeah.
All right, so any discussion on suspending the vote to suspend the rules, or the motion to suspend the rules?
Again, I'm usually not in favor of suspending the rules, I like the process, but this is of no fault of ours or the administration, but it's, and it's no fault of the town, it's just the due course of their business, so.
I, I would agree with that sentiment, I think we've tried to steer away from suspending the rules, but in this situation, obviously, it's, it's an imminent concern that we need to.
Yeah, and I'm on the same page as both of you in that, I hate, I really don't like suspending rules, but.
I like the rules.
Yeah, that's why we're all here, you know, as a referee, I love rules, what can I say?
It's not unanimous that you don't like to suspend the rules.
But we're gonna.
But we're going to.
But we're gonna anyway.
This is unnecessary.
Any other comment or questions, if not, we'll vote on suspending the rules, motion first, Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Moskowitz. Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Hicks.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, the rules are suspended, so that we are now able to consider the first motion, which was to approve the town meeting warrant Article II as presented here in the packet, right, is there discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, then we'll vote on that, we'll go the other way, Mr. Hicks.
Yes.
And Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Moskowitz. Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so that is approved, thank you. Okay. And.
I have public comment.
Oh, we have public comment from a member of the committee.
Thank you, just a minute, Dr., Dr., Mr. Chair. One, I don't know if I mentioned this last time, but in, I got to go to the Franklin and Kittredge School to participate in Read Across America, and we read to some second grade classrooms. I was told I was, I looked like a king, and I'm gorgeous, so that made me feel really good about myself, and it was just a wonderful time to read those books to those kiddos, so thank you to those schools and the people who organized them for inviting me and so many other wonderful town employees in to do that. And then second, I have sixth graders who are in band this year, so on Tuesday night, I got to go to the All Town Band Festival. It was an experience memorable in many ways, it was wonderful, but I will say, just the, the band program in this town is fantastic, so thank you to Mr. Smalley, Mr. Ignose, and Mr. Nelson for leading that and teaching our kids to be so musically inclined. I loved the Disney melody from the high school, and I will say, the sixth graders performed Mechanical Monsters for the second time, they did it in January, and this was a much better performance, you can see that they improved. It's amazing how great these kids are, they just, like, 90% of them just learned how to start playing this year, and they were all able to start and stop together, which I think is.
That's major.
Fantastic, and I love that the first song that they learned to play in sixth grade is the Eagle Summit March, and that all, and your, was your son in, in band? They all played, like, the entire, all four bands played it all at once, and it was fantastic, and it's just like one of those great musical traditions. That's part of.
North Andover tradition for many years, actually.
That they used, you learn it, the first song in sixth grade, and then you play it.
All through high school.
All through high school, like, at this particular event, and that was wonderful, so thank you to those, to the teachers and the students for that performance, it was, it was great.
And along those lines, I'll add a shout out, because we, last, it was last Thursday, actually, went to the band and chorus concert at the high school, and it was phenomenal, you know, the, the next phase, right, the nine through 12 group, just incredible stuff, both, I, I have to admit, I mean, I sat there and listened to both those groups, and they sounded like college-level bands and choruses to me, and, you know, it's really kudos to our music department, they're terrific, absolutely terrific, okay. I mean, I don't, there's no other public comment here unless any other members want to say anything? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Somebody would like to make one?
Motion to adjourn.
Very good, is there a second? It's seconded. All right, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Ed. Ms. Alyssa.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we're adjourned.